Raise my left too. They're new.
So Chairman.
They're brand new.
When we were at NECO, they had these on the, um, they had these on the paper.
And I think this is my first official time to say Happy New Year to all of you all. Uh, this is my first B O C meeting for twenty twenty-four. It's so good to be back and, um, back in the swing of things, back in business. As we call our meeting to order this evening, um, I want to, uh, jump right into that. But, but right before we do that, I, I want to do something different, Commissioners. Um, so just this past weekend, one of our community leaders suffered a tragic family loss. And I just want to take a moment, um, for this board to just, just have a moment of silence, just for a quick moment. Thank you so much. Mr. Munisaw Ahmad and his family, um, lost their son. And let me tell you, um, family tragedies, anybody, any one of us could experience something. And one thing about Rockdale County, we are a community that cares. And, um, when something impacts one of us, it really impacts all of us. So I thank you Commissioners and to our staff and all of those who are here tonight for joining us in a, a moment of silence, um, and for recognizing the contributions of Mr. Ahmad and his family to Rockdale County. But we are praying for this time of bereavement and loss for their family at this particular time. So that's just really important, um, that we do that. And when you have people who are actively involved in making a difference, um, the way he and his family has made and continue to make, we want to make sure that we, um, acknowledge. So I just wanted to take a moment to do so. Thank you so much. Yes. Let's keep them in prayer. Let's keep them in prayer as we continue to move forward. So we're calling our meeting to order.
We have two meetings.
We got two meetings. That's right. Thank you Commissioner. You all, will you?
I know, I have some time.
You ate your Wheaties. You've been eating your Wheaties or something. You, you, you alert. Well, I'm, I'll be counting on you through the evening to keep me, keep me focused. Getting back into the swing of things. Absolutely. All right. So Executive Director Rolich, we are calling, um, uh, first meeting we're calling to off, uh, to order is the resolution to, uh, for the re-adoption of the Comprehensive Service Delivery Strategy for the City of Conyers and Rockdale County and also the associated documents. So Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
So I move to approve the resolution as presented.
A second to that motion.
It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or comments regarding this particular resolution? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. So we will officially adjourn that meeting and close out that point of business regarding that particular meeting. And we'll move now to, um, call our next work session to order. And we're calling this meeting to order. We're officially starting right now for our Rockdale County Board of Commissioners work session. And starting off, item number two is special recognitions and presentations of the 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, Mr. Jeffrey White Senior, uh, and from Banks, Finley, and White Company Certified Public Accountants. And our very capable CFO, Ms. Michelle Erizari.
Good evening Chairman and Madam Commissioners. Um, Mr. Jeffrey White could not be here this evening, but Wandalyn Wright CPA, who's also a partner, is here to present the annual comprehensive financial report.
Absolutely.
And there's a copy at Vidaeus.
Yes. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As Michelle said, I'm not Jeffrey, but, um, I'm here to go over the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year or calendar year ended for you guys, December 31st, 2022. So, um, next slide. So this is what, uh, uh, some bullet points of matters of discussion. Um, I'll give an overview of the annual, uh, the annual report that you have in front of you. Then I'll go over the, the audit scope, which just means, uh, I'll tell you what we did with regard to the audit. Then I'll get into the audit objectives. Out there, I'll be talking about what we were actually engaged to do. Then I'll talk about the respective audit responsibilities. Uh, first I'll go over our responsibilities as your external independent auditor. Then in contrast, I'll talk about what Rockdale County's responsibilities were with regard to the audit. Then I'll give, um, I'll, I'll talk about the, the auditor reports. I'll talk about what those reports are, uh, the financial statement reports, and then the internal control and compliance reports. Then I'll follow that up with a summary of the audit results, what, what types of opinions we issued. And then I'll talk a little bit about the management representation letter, uh, what that is and what the purpose of that is, uh, in, in the context of an audit. Next slide. So like I said, we completed our audit of the, uh, 2022 financial statements for Rockdale County. And we submitted our reports, um, and are giving, um, our, our audit results to those charged with governance that would be, that would be you, that is the, the commission. Uh, so your annual report is, is divided into several sections, uh, really four main sections. Uh, the first section is the introductory section of the report. That's where you will see, uh, some general information about the county, the county's, uh, governmental structure or charts, uh, uh, principal officials. Then after that, you'll have the financial section, uh, of the, of the annual report. Uh, that's where you will find the independent auditor's report on the financial statements. Uh, you'll see, um, uh, what we call a management's discussion and analysis. That's the, um, that's the discussion of the changes from, uh, that occurred from last year, uh, to this year. When I say last year to this year, I mean 21 to 22. Uh, there, uh, in the financial section, you'll also see what we refer to as the basic financial statements. So those are your government-wide financial statements, your fund financial statements, and then your notes to the financial statements. So also in that financial section, you'll see, uh, what we refer to as required supplementary information. That's some budgetary information that's required to be reported, um, information about, uh, your pension, your pension and other post-employment benefits. And then you have some other supplementary, what we call other, next slide, uh, other supplementary information. Next slide. Okay. Other supplementary information. That's just, um, some additional information on, uh, some of the county's smaller, uh, smaller funds. Then you'll have, after the other supplementary information, you'll have the statistical section. The statistical section provides trend data, uh, multi-year, uh, information as well as some economic, uh, demographic data. And then the, the annual report concludes with the compliance section. Uh, so that's what we, uh, I'll be referring to as the single audit. That is the audit of the county's, uh, compliance with, uh, federal programs. Next slide. So audit scope. We audited, uh, the, the county's governmental activities. The governmental activities, uh, just in a nutshell, are those activities that are mostly funded, uh, through taxes, uh, business licenses, uh, grants, government grants. The business-type activities, those activities are mostly financed with, uh, user charges like the water fund, uh, component units like the library that, that rolls into the report, uh, major funds like your general fund. We audited major funds separately and rendered a report on those. Um, aggregate remaining fund information, budgetary information, and then the related notes. Uh, those are your basic financial statements that we rendered an opinion on. Um, as part of the audit, we also, uh, took a look at what we call RSI, or Required Supplementary Information that I mentioned, management's discussion and analysis that you see in the annual report, uh, pension and OPEB information. Uh, we take a look and discuss that in the report as well. Next slide. So audit objectives, what we were engaged to do. We were engaged to audit the financial statements. Uh, and there, uh, our, our main objective is to just obtain, uh, what we consider reasonable assurance about whether those financial statements that you have in front of you are free from material misstatement, whether due to fraud or error. And we render an opinion with regard, with regard to that. Uh, we, our objective is to, um, uh, provide a report on internal controls related to the financial statements. Uh, that's where we perform tests of compliance with, uh, the provisions of laws, grants, regulations. If you didn't, uh, we test those provisions that had you not complied with them, it could result in you having to, uh, refund, uh, be in default, refund, uh, federal government some grant money, uh, which could have, of course, an effect on your financial statements. And then we, um, our third objective is to, um, uh, render an opinion on whether or not you complied with, uh, federal programs or the federal grant money that you got. Uh, next slide. So in order to have a successful audit, uh, both sides need to, uh, need to be responsible for certain things. So as the independent auditors, uh, BFW and company, our responsibility is first of, first and foremost, to, um, make sure we comply with applicable auditing standards. Uh, in this case, uh, you have federal money, um, so we have to comply with government auditing standards and uniform guidance over federal programs. It is our responsibility to make sure we, uh, we maintain an attitude of professional skepticism. Uh, we, you know, we, we take a, a good look, an objective look at the information you provided us, uh, test it for reasonableness and accuracy. Uh, we identify and assess risk of non-compliance. Uh, we take a look at internal controls or financial reporting and compliance. Uh, we, we, we do this risk assessment, uh, is what we call it. The risk assessment, uh, we, we take a look, make sure we understand the inner workings, uh, as it relates to compliance and financial reporting with the county for the purpose of, uh, determining for us where the greatest risk of material misstatement lie and, and design our audit procedures about this, uh, around that. So there are no, um, uh, cookie cutter, uh, uh, procedures. You know, you can't really cut and paste. They have to be, um, specific to the specific risk of the discounting in, uh, as opposed to, um, other governmental entities. Uh, it is our responsibility to evaluate whether or not the accounting principles that were applied that you see in the financial statements, whether or not those were reasonable, uh, whether or not, uh, the accounting, significant accounting estimates that you see in the financials, um, are reasonable under the circumstances. And then we conclude whether or not, uh, there are any going, what we consider or call going concern issues. And going concern issues, uh, is, is, is sort of a for, a forward-looking concept where, um, we make an evaluation, uh, as to whether or not the county can continue on for the next year after we, after we issue our report. So what are Rockdale's responsibilities? Next slide. Rockdale's responsibilities for the financial statements is to prepare the financial statements that you see, uh, that you have in front of you, uh, make sure they are prepared and presented in accordance with, uh, U.S. generally accepted accounting principles, make sure they maintain a system of internal controls to ensure that those, those financial statements are accurate and free from, uh, material misstatement, whether from error or fraud. Um, and then, uh, it is Rockdale's responsibility to make sure that in preparing the financial statements, that they have looked at any going concern issues too. So not only do the, the independent auditors look to see whether or not you can go on for the next year, um, it is Rockdale's responsibility itself to, to do that same risk assessment and determine whether or not, uh, they have the resources and the ability to, to go on for, uh, the next, the next 12 months. Um, for compliance, next slide. With respect to compliance, uh, Rockdale County Management is responsible for making sure that it has, uh, complied with all, uh, significant, all, all terms of grants, laws, regulations, and make sure that they have an adequate system of internal controls over compliance to make sure, uh, you, you have a system in place to make sure that you, you do in fact comply. Next slide. So we issued three reports. After saying all that, we issued three reports. The first report we issued was on the financial statements. That's the independent auditor's report. We issued, uh, an internal control report over financial reporting and compliance. Uh, and then we issued, uh, a report, a third report on compliance under the single audit. Next slide. So that first report that I mentioned, the report on the financial statements, you'll find that on pages one through four. And that, that report renders an opinion on whether or not the county, uh, presented its financial statements fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles in the United States. And so we issue, you'll be pleased to note, we issued, uh, an unmodified opinion. Uh, that is the best opinion that an independent auditor can issue. Um, that means that these financial statements that, that come after that independent auditor's report, we, we believe based on our audit procedures, our risk assessment, that they are materially accurate. Next slide. That, uh, financial report on pages one through four also discusses the required supplementary information. It's not, required supplementary information is not, um, required to be in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles, meaning the absence of it won't affect the opinion, but it is, it is, uh, it is required to be there, um, at, um, as some additional analysis. And so you have the M D N A, Management's Discussion and Analysis, which I said just provides some information on, uh, prior year versus current year so that the county can see in a summarized, uh, form whether or not the county's position, uh, has improved or deteriorated from one year to the next. Then you have some selected pension and OPEB information that's required. Uh, we talk about, we talk about those two, uh, those two, those two elements in our financial report. Uh, while we don't render an opinion on those, uh, we perform some limited procedures on them. We, uh, and that's, that's what's required. Uh, we, we make inquiries. We make sure that, um, that those reports, the M D N A and the pension and OPEB information, um, is consistent with the information that we did audit and that is reasonable. Next slide. The second of the three reports that we issued is the internal control report over financial reporting and compliance. And you can find that, you have to flip two pages, uh, 117 and 118 of your report. Um, that's back in the compliance section. So that auditor's report, uh, is, is where we, um, discuss whether or not we found any deficiencies in the county's internal control, uh, whether or not we found any instances of non-compliance with grants, contracts, uh, laws or regulations. And again, we're pleased to, we're pleased to inform you that we did not, uh, find any deficiencies in internal controls that we consider to be material weaknesses and thereby, uh, required to report. Um, and we did not find any instances, uh, of non-compliance that, uh, are required to be reported. So again, that's very good. Next slide. And then the third and final report we issued is, uh, our opinion on compliance under the single audit. And so that's on page, that starts on page 119, I think, 119 through 121. So this is where we talk, this is where we talk about the results of our test of what we call major programs. So let me explain a little bit about major programs if you're not familiar. So we don't audit all of the federal programs of the county. Uh, we, we do our risk assessment. We look at, uh, your grant amounts, your expenditures, uh, relative to the different programs and determine the most significant ones and audit, and audit those. And so, uh, we render, uh, we, we disclose which ones we audited and we render an opinion on those federal programs that we did audit. Uh, so, uh, just to summarize, uh, with regard to compliance under the single audit, um, we issue unmodified opinions on those federal programs that we audited as well. And we did not, uh, identify, uh, any deficiencies in internal control over compliance. So three for three, good reports. Next slide. Okay. So here's the summary of the auditor's results. Like I said, we issued unmodified opinion on the financial statements. No significant deficiencies in internal controls, uh, no significant deficiencies, uh, certainly that we consider to be material weaknesses, and then no material non-compliance was found throughout the audit. Uh, next slide. Yeah, very good. With regard to the, um, the audit results on the federal programs, again, no, uh, no internal control deficiencies, over compliance, uh, unmodified opinions. We didn't have any question costs or disallowed cost. Um, the major programs that I talked about, we, we audited three, pro, three of your programs, uh, in 2022. That was the Highway Planning and Construction Grant, Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, and then Capitalization Grants for Clean Water State Revolving Funds. Those were the three programs that we, that we, um, that we audited. Uh, the county is, uh, what, uh, the uniform guidance and the federal government considers a low-risk oddity, uh, which means that, uh, you didn't have any, any findings, uh, in the last couple of years, this year included. There, and what it means for us and for you is that, um, you don't have to have, um, as many programs audited. Uh, so they say you're a low risk. Um, you can, you can have as, as little as 20% of your federal, total federal programs audited, um, as somebody who, another entity who's not considered, um, low risk. Uh, but having said all that, uh, we, we, we covered most of, uh, the federal money that you, that you expended in 2022. So we, we, those three programs are actually made up of almost 90% of, uh, the federal, the federal funds that you expended in 2022. No, uh, like I said, no, no findings related to the financial statements, no federal ward findings or question costs that we had to report. Next slide. So, uh, the management representation letter. The management representation letter is a, is a communication that we are required to obtain to, um, be able to issue an audit report. And so that management representation letter is, is designed to make sure that Rockdale County is aware of and that they have, um, fulfilled their responsibilities under the, under the audit. Um, I mentioned those responsibilities earlier. Their responsibility to correctly prepare the financial statements, system of internal control, um, designed to detect fraud or error. So we obtained that, um, and that's what, in a nutshell, what that, that letter says, right? Um, you, Rockdale fulfilled its responsibilities. Um, the financial statements are prepared accurately in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. Um, all of the transactions have been recorded and they are reflected in the financial statements, um, that, and that they have no knowledge of fraud or suspected fraud that, that affects the county. And that is it. Uh, next, so next slide. Um, if there are any questions, I will be happy to, to answer.
Well, first of all, let me say thank you and thank you for giving us this summary and overview. I'm going to yield to both of the Commissioners and I'll start with Commissioner Washington.
First of all, thank you for this. This is, um, great, this, the presentation of this. I was very, very, um, pleased with this. Um, one of the questions that we get or that I've received. I can't believe folks can't hear me. One of the, the questions that we, uh, that I've received, um, recently about our audits. Um, I know that we did receive, um, an award for our audit last year. Um, but they want, the, the question is, um, how do the, how does the? is, how do the, how does the public know that we're not hiding anything and from, and how do we trust the auditor?
How does the, how, well, as far as how to trust the auditor, I would say we are independent, number, number one. If we were not independent, I mean, there's, there's no point, right?
And I think, I think, let me just jump in with what the commi, she's absolutely right about the number of inquiries from the general public. Now that you've given us this presentation this evening, that allows our finance department along with our CFO and her team to be able to go ahead and publish this by placing it on our website, making it accessible to the citizens of Rockdale County. Commissioner Washington is speaking to the point that we've had so many multiple inquiries from our citizens, our taxpayers, and rightfully so, wanting to know about the audit and when we're going to publish it. But to the point she's making to fact check the auditor is to look at their credentials and to make sure they are people who are legit and are recognized by both the state and the federal government. And of course, we're spending a good bit of money to make sure we do this right and we have to have legitimate people in here to fact check this.
And to, to, to your point, I just want to say that my firm, Banks, Finley, White and Company, we have been in business 50 years now. We did not make it 50 years without adhering to the highest quality standards. So our, our whole, our, our business is built on reputation, and we didn't get a reputation for low-quality work, so that's.
That's it, that's the answer.
Commissioner Williams, any questions?
So thank you so much for this report.
Yes.
It really is very comprehensive and your overview was really right on, so I really appreciate that. It's always nice to hear from an outside source that everything is going as it should, that there are no, no recommendations for changes because everything is, is going as it should. So thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Well, you're welcome, and I would say.
Let me, let me define what it is. I said we appreciate it. What I appreciate is the company coming in and doing such a thorough job.
You're welcome, you're welcome. That's our job. I will, I will say this, that good financial statements and good audits don't happen just because of us, right? So you, you also have your finance team to thank in that regard. If, if the financial statements weren't as they should be, I mean, we would call it like we see it, right? Like I said, we're independent. But I think it speaks, the report speaks to the competence of Rockdale's finance team, so.
So listen, let me say again on behalf of the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners, thank you so much. Let's give a round of applause to our own finance team. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Ladies and gentlemen, as you, as you know, we've had over the last few years, including the time that this audit was conducted, we've had a lot of transition in our finance department and our leadership. So I want to say let's give finance, again, another round of applause. Absolutely. It certainly speaks to the level of excellence and achievement and leadership, should I say, coming out of the finance department. We're going to move this agenda on, on night and move on to the next item, and we will go to the.
All right, that sounds good, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Okay, so I will keep reading until I am interrupted, so we will start with the first item on next Tuesday's agenda, which is item 51 with the Department of Labor through the Finance Department. This is for the Workforce Development Initiative Electric Vehicle EV Maintenance and Training Grant. The amount is $300,000 with no match and the term is three years. Item 52 is with Fifth Asset.
So let me, let me just stop you right there. I just want to point out that that was arranged and we got that because of Commissioner Washington's work.
Thank you.
Absolutely, let's give her a round of applause.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Excellent. Item 52 is with Fifth Asset Doing Business as Debt Book through the Finance Department. This is for booking leases renewal. This is change order number one to contract 2023-40. The first year of 2024 is 10,000, in 2025 is 10,500, 2026 is $11,025, for a total of $31,525 for three years, and this is host-funded. Item 53 is with the Hospital Authority of Rockdale County for Emergency Management Agency Department, and this is for the Public Trail AED Project Grant. The amount is $14,450 with no match, and it's through December 31st, 2024. Item 54 is with the Georgia Emergency Management Agency and Homeland Security Agency through the EMA Department. This is for statewide mutual aid agreement at no cost. The term is March 1st, 2024 through March 1st, 2028. Item 55 is with Motorola Solutions to the EMA 911 Department. This is to accept the replacement microwave equipment for public safety radio system. This is change order number one to contract 2020, to contract 2023-89. It's an additional $48,378. This is a one-time purchase for equipment and installation, and this is through the tower fund. Item 56 is with the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council through the State Court. This is for the DUI Court Supervised Treatment Program, change order number two to contract 2023-102. This is an additional $17,280.72 with no match, and it's through June 30th, 2024. Item 57 is with ADP through the Talent Management Department. This is guaranteed price agreement. It's change order number seven to contract 2007-211. The current cost is $577,126.13. The proposed cost is $471,049.1. This is a decrease of $106,077.12, and the term is for five years.
Wow.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right. Item 58 is with ADP through the Talent Management Department for System Enhancement. This is change order number two to contract 2013-32. The amount is $79,426.80 per year for three years and a $32,000 one-time fee. This is for three years. Item 59 is with Kaiser Permanente through the Talent Management Department. This is for the Biometric Screenings and Wellness Activities. This is funded through Kaiser's Wellness Funds. The term is January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. Item 60 is with Retiree First LLC through the Talent Management Department. This is for the Medicare Advantage Retiree Advocate for Direct Contract with Aetna through the Rockdale's Medical Carrier. This will be active until terminated while transitioning through the ADP portal, and this is submitted for ratification. Item 61 is with Progressive Premier Insurance Company of Illinois. This is to the Talent Management Department for Property Damage Claim of 2018 Ford Explorer. This is for the Georgia Property Damage Release and Acceptance of $11,524.35, and is submitted for ratification. Item 62 is with Affleck through the Talent Management Department. This is for the new policy for cancer traditional benefit for full-time employees and eligible spouses. It's paid 100% by the employee. This is active until terminated while transitioning through the ADP portal and is submitted for ratification. Item 63 is with Wellness Coaches USA LLC Doing Business as Ramp Help through the Talent Management Department. This is for the On-Site Wellness Coach for All Employees to Utilize. It's amendment number one to contract 2022-216. This is to amend the Statement of Work to Enhance Version, to an Enhanced Version to Track Employee Wellness Activities. This is funded with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield Wellness Funds. This is for one year with option to auto-renew. Item 64 is with the Collaborative Incorporated for the Planning and Development Department for Infrastructure Master Planning and Professional Support Services. This is in an amount not to exceed $98,800 and is for five months.
Can we talk about, can we, can you explain exactly, you know, infrastructure is such a buzzword in Rockdale County? So I know this is good news, great news on our continued efforts to have plans in place, so I would like the public to know.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much for your question, Commissioner Washington. Yes, the collaborative is assisting the Planning and Development Department for us to look at each one of our infrastructure areas. This is for us to take a comprehensive look at a basic snapshot, not so basic, snapshot about where we are regarding our infrastructure, water, stormwater, roads, and all other infrastructures aligning, leading to development. This initial master plan, as we're calling it, is a way for us to kind of see how to prepare for Rockdale's growth. One of the things that will be following and accompanying the infrastructure plan in alignment with what you've led throughout the year will be the Rockdale 100 Housing Study. But in order for us to know the kind of housing that we need here at Rockdale that would be efficient to meet our infrastructure current capacity and our growing capacity, we may have to be able to first take that snapshot. So the initial findings, we're using an outside source to bring all of our information together, all of the individual master plans done by my colleagues, the other directors from the other departments, and looking at it for one comprehensive analysis that would feed our comp plan and also feed our, also future housing study. So that's where this plan sits in sort of the scheme of things, the comp plan, the infrastructure study, the housing plan.
I love it, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Director. Thank you for Commissioner Washington for bringing that up. Commissioner Williams, she's absolutely right, and there's a, there is a big buzz in the community about where we are in terms of infrastructure upgrades and improvement. What we can't do as a board is two things, no need to point the finger at the people behind us, but we cannot sit dormant and idly by and not prepare for the days ahead. And that's what Director Njoku was talking about, is pre-planning and making sure the years 2040, the years 2050 and 2060, that we're placing Rockdale in the right shape so those commissioners and those community leaders down the road don't have to be scrambling as much as we've had to scramble the last five to eight years to try to figure out how to patch it up and fix it and deal with what was neglected. So this is pre-planning in the right direction for community planning as a whole. Infrastructure improvement, what the President talked about four years ago, build back better. He talks about infrastructure and upgrades and improvements, and this matches that on the local level in Rockdale County.
Absolutely.
Next item, please.
All right, item 65 is with Enterprise Fleet Management for the General Services Department and Fleet Division. This is for Fleet Replacement Plan. It's change order number 12 to contract 2022-164. This is for one 2024 Ford Transit 350 Passenger Van for the Juvenile Court. The amount is $13,516.20 for the year. This is host-funded and submitted for ratification. Item 66 is with United Maintenance through the General Services Department. This is for the HVAC Total Maintenance Repair and Replacement. The amount is $147,207. This is for one year with option to renew four additional one-year periods. Item 67 is with Snapping Shoals EMC through the General Services Department for the EMA 911 Security Lighting at 32, 35, 25, Highway 3138. This is change order number one to contract 2023-70, 175. This is to correct the monthly amount from $46.80 per month to $50.80 per month. Item 68 is with Ronald Davis through the General Services Department. This is for the lease for 842 West Circle Parking Lot for the Elections Office. The amount is $1,500 per month. The term is February 15th, 2024 through February 14th, 2026, with month-to-month auto-renewal. This is for the landlord, this is where the landlord reserves a right to increase the rent, and it's submitted for ratification. Item 69 is with Atlas Technical Consultants through the Transportation Department. This is for the Courtesy Parkway Extension Project Design Services. This is change order number four to contract 2017-36. This is to increase, and there's an increase in design services due to delays and additional changes. The additional amount is $189,402.18. This is SPOST-funded. Item 70 is with Atlas Technical Consultants through the Transportation Department for Project Management on SPOST Projects. This is change order number nine to contract 2020-23. It's an additional $150,000 and to extend the term 12 months through December 31st, 2024, and this is SPOST-funded. Item 71 is with OpenGov through the Transportation Department. This is for Asset Management Software. The amount is $77,032.44. Year 2024 is $24,435.35. Year 2025 is $25,657.12, and year 2026 is $26,939.97, and this is for 36 months. Item 72 is with the City of Conyers, and it's to rescind contract 2021-164, change order number three, through the Transportation Department. This was a memorandum of understanding for the Sigmund Road Widening Phase Two, amendment number three, to contract 2021-156. The terms of reimbursement from the city to the county with the city reimbursing $811,016, and the term was July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
So, so why are we rescinding? Why are they rescinding? What, what's going on? Director Kelly, I don't know.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Washington.
Good afternoon.
So this explicitly speaks to Phase Two. If you'll notice, we have the balance years had to shift for, to match the contract end.
Okay.
So simply, the same, same, same amount you'll see in the next.
The next one, had I just held my horses.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
All right.
Next item, please.
All right, and the next item, item 73 with the City of Conyers through the Transportation Department. It's a memorandum of understanding for the Sigmund Road Widening Phase Two. This is amendment number three to contract 2021-156. This is for the date change only for terms of reimbursement from the city to the county with the city reimbursing $811,016. The term is February 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2024. Item 74 is with SERM through the Transportation Department. This is for the Courtesy Parkway Demolition Services. This is change order number six to contract 2020-18 for additional services in the additional amount of $225,600. This is for the six months from the notice to proceed, and this is SPOST-funded. Item 75 is with 20th Television Productions through the Parks and Recreation Department. This is for the filming of Will Trent, Season Two, A Costly Mill. The amount is $8,300 in revenue. The term is January 30th, 2024 through February 6th, 2024, and this is submitted for ratification. Item 76 is with American Legion Post 77 and Art Dar through the Parks and Recreation Department. This is for the lease for Legion Field. The amount is $35,000 per year and it's for 15 years. Item 78 is with the Hospital Authority of Rockdale County through the Parks and Recreation Department Senior Services Division. This is for the Liquid Supplement Grant. The amount is $7,000 with an in-kind match of $450. The term is July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. Item 79 is with A Action Vending through the Parks and Recreation Department. This is for the Concession Stand Services at Johnson Park, American Legion Field and Earl O'Neill Field. The county receives 25% of the gross. This is for one year with option to renew two additional 12-month periods. Item 80 is with Yolanda Nicole Simpson/ASL With Me through the Parks and Recreation Department. This is for the Instructor for Sign Language Classes for. This is for the Instructor for Sign Language Classes for Kids and Adults at Johnson Park. It's a seventy-thirty split with the twelve thousand dollar estimated fee, estimated income with the term being March third, March first twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first twenty twenty-four with two twelve-month additional renewal periods. Item eighty-one is with Billy Stouffer through the Juvenile Court. This is a contract attorney. This is change order number two to Contract Twenty Twenty-two dash one eighty-eight. This is a price increase with an additional fifteen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars from fifty-six thousand four hundred dollars per year to seventy-two thousand three hundred and sixty total for the year. And this is for one year. Item eighty-two is with Gidget Johnson through the Juvenile Court for a contract attorney. This is change order number two to Contract Twenty Twenty-two dash one eighty-seven. This is a price increase of an additional fifteen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars going from fifty-six thousand four hundred dollars per year to seventy-two thousand three hundred and sixty dollars per year. And this is for one year. Item eighty-three is with Devonah Roseberry through the Juvenile Court. This is a contract attorney. It's change order number two to Contract Twenty Twenty-two dash one eighty-six. This is a price increase. It's an additional fifteen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars from fifty-six thousand four hundred dollars per year to seventy-two thousand three hundred and sixty dollars per year for one-year term. Item eighty-four is with Superior Document Solutions through Technology Services Department. This is for the Sourcewell Printer and Copier Contract from Multi-Departments. This is change order number two to Contract Twenty Twenty-three dash one forty-two for an additional copier and printers and upgrades. It's an additional one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents per month with a total of ten thousand seventy-two dollars and eighty cents. And this is for five years. Item eighty-five is with Target Solutions Learning, Doing Business as Vector Solutions. This is through the Sheriff's Office for Guardian Tracking System, the OP, OPS Unit. This is for Employee Performance Management Software Renewal. It's change order number one to Contract Twenty Twenty-two dash twenty-five. The amount is seven thousand seven hundred eleven dollars and forty-four cents. And it's through February seventh twenty twenty-five. Item eighty-six is a requisition through the Transportation Department for Sunbelt Traffic. This is change order to, this is a change order to Contract Twenty Twenty-three dash zero-two for the Traffic Signal Maintenance. The amount is twenty-five thousand dollars. Item eighty-seven is a requisition through Transportation Department for Atlas Technical Consultants. This is for Preliminary Design Update to three A and three B of Sigmund Road. The amount is two million one hundred fifty-three thousand and three hundred dollars. This is SPOST funded. Item eighty-eight is a requisition through EMA Department for Lumen Serve. This is for the Service Contract that Includes Three Towers. The term is February twenty-second twenty twenty-four through February twenty-first twenty twenty-five. The amount is seventeen thousand, seventeen thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. And this is the tower fund. Item eighty-nine is a requisition through the General Services Department for Beatty Construction. This is to remove and replace windows at the old Jail Museum. The amount is thirty-seven thousand ninety-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. And this is host funded. Item ninety is a requisition through the General Services Department for Praxis Three for the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office CSI Property Addition and Renovation Project Construction Documents. The amount is two hundred one thousand six hundred dollars. And this is SPOST funded. Item ninety-one is a requisition through the Rockdale Water Resources Sewer Collections for Optera Solution for Various Easement Clearing Sites. It's in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. Item ninety-two is a requisition through the Water, Water Resources and Sewer Collections for Inliner Solutions for Sewer Rehabilitation of Manhole and Pipes Throughout the County. The amount is three million nine hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty-three cents. Item ninety-three is a requisition for the Water Resources Water Distribution. For Ferguson Water Works, this is for hydrants in the amount of twenty-three thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars. Item ninety-four is a requisition through Water Resources Water Distribution for Delta Municipal Supply for Water and Sewer Parts for Maintenance. The amount is nineteen thousand eight hundred seven dollars and fifteen cents. Item ninety-five is a requisition through the Water Resources Department, Water Distribution for Core and Main Copper Tubes. The amount is twenty thousand four hundred nineteen dollars and four cents. Item ninety-six is a requisition through the Water Resources Department, Customer Service for Envelopes and Forms, for Postage and Printing Services for Water Bill and Inserts. The amount is three hundred eleven thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. Item ninety-seven is a requisition through Water Resources Department Engineering for Engineering Strategies. This is for the Almond Branch Sanitary Sewer Trunk Line Design Services. The amount is one hundred sixty-one thousand eight hundred ten dollars. Item ninety-eight is a requisition through Rockdale Water Resources for Corporate Environmental Risk Management, SERM, for Sewer Preventative Maintenance for twenty twenty-four. The term is February eleventh twenty twenty-four through February tenth twenty twenty-five in an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. Item ninety-nine is a requisition through the Rockdale Water Resources Department, also for SERM, for Water and Sewer System Asset Inventory Program for twenty twenty-four. The term is February eleventh twenty twenty-four through February tenth twenty twenty-five in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. Item one hundred is a requisition through the Rockdale Water Resources Department for SERM for Engineering Staff Augmentation Support for twenty twenty-four. The term is February eleventh twenty twenty-four through February tenth twenty twenty-five in an amount not to exceed nine hundred ten thousand dollars. Item one oh one is a requisition for Water Resources Department for SERM for the Sewer Rehabilitation Program for twenty twenty-four. The term is February eleventh twenty twenty-four through February tenth twenty twenty-five, not to exceed one million dollars. Item one oh two is a requisition through Water Resources Department of the Water Treatment Plant for USA Blue Book. This is for supplies used in the lab to test water, to test water treated at the Water Treatment Plant in an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars. Item one oh three is a requisition through the Water Resources Department, the water, for the Water Treatment Plant for Hatch Company. This is for the supplies used in the lab to test the water treated at the Water Treatment Plant in an amount not to exceed forty-two thousand dollars. Item one oh four is a requisition through the Water Resources Department, the Water Treatment Plant, IDEXX Laboratories for Supplies Used in the Lab to Test the Water Treated at the Water Treatment Plant in an Amount Not to Exceed Sixteen Thousand Dollars. Item one oh five is a requisition through the Rockdale Water Resources Department through the Water Treatment Plant for Fisher Scientific. These are the supplies used in the labs and by water quality techs in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Item one oh six is a requisition through the Sheriff's Office for GT Distributors for Bulletproof vests. The amount is sixteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. This is fifty percent grant funded. Item one oh seven is a requisition through the Planning and Development Department for Safe Bill. These are for Inspection Services and Plan Review Services in an Amount Not to Exceed One Hundred and Fifty Thousand Dollars. Item one oh eight is a requisition through the Clerk of Superior and State Courts, Janice Morris, the Clerk of Superior and State Court Jury Account. These are funds for jury card payments in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. Item one oh nine is a requisition through the Parks and Recreation Department for Floor Creation. This is for the replacement of Costly Mill Park Event Center Flooring. The amount is forty thousand dollars. This is host funded and submitted for ratification.
Why do we need new flooring out there? Is there damage to it or just worn out?
Because the chairman's out there dancing so much during this.
I yield to Director Redman, yes.
Good evening Chairman and Madam Commissioners. Yes Commissioner Williams, the floor does have scratches on it. We've had a high number of rentals since we've opened the building. The floor has been down for roughly five years now, which is pretty much the lifespan of the floor. The new flooring that's going in has a higher life expectancy because it's built for higher foot traffic. So we hope to be able to preserve, preserve this one a little longer. We're also looking at getting some different type of chairs that are not so heavy. As you know, some people when they clean up, they like to drag the chairs instead of lift them. So we're trying to find different ways to make sure the floor lasts a little longer.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Five years doesn't sound long to me.
Thank you Director. Thank you.
All right. I can't believe it's been open five years. I'm thinking, I'm sorry.
Time flies. And let's just not forget what Director Redman and Ms. Bing told us midpoint of last year about the amount of usage and rentals that we're getting. Costly Mill has become one of the most popular spots throughout Rockdale County. I know our local school system uses it a lot and other entities in and around the community, not to mention the number of citizens. And that's what we want. We want folks to use it and rental, and rent the place out. But I have to agree with Commissioner Williams. I mean, but I was glad to hear the report from the director that he's looking at a different type of flooring as well as the chairs. Part of the rental agreement for people to receive their deposit back is for them to clean up the facility. Well, sometimes folks are a little lazy. They dragging the chairs across the floor and scraping up the floor. My mama would have had a fit. They dragging and scuffing, scuffing up the floor. I don't know whether you can even spell that word, scuffing, but you know what it means, don't you? Just tearing up the floor and it causes a problem over time. And if you doing that in a short period of time Director Simpkins, you're gonna have to replace it. So hats off to Parks and Rec for the rental and the frequency of the rental and the work that they're doing out there. But I'm, I'm interested in an update, Director Redman, as are the Commissioners for what you're doing to replace and give us a different type of flooring that can become like a Timex watch. It can take a licking and keep on ticking a little bit longer than five years. Yes, Commissioner Williams, was that what you were thinking along those lines?
Yes, I, yes. Because commercial flooring usually lasts longer than five years.
I don't think, I think that Costly Mill has been such a hit. And I think that when we conceived it, we weren't expecting, we thought it was gonna be good, but we didn't think it was gonna be the sensation that it is. So I think, I think five years, I think we did good with the amount of events that we have out there. But I am interested to.
Commissioner, I'm not gonna downplay it. I think anything we do is gonna be a big hit in Rockdale County. I'm super excited about everything that's on the horizon. When we cut the ribbon out at Costly Mill just a few years ago, I knew it was gonna be a big hit. I knew people gonna be using it. They're gonna be up to capacity in terms of their rentals. Absolutely. Everything that we're doing, you need to be jumping and shouting now because it's gonna be a big hit when it comes to fruition.
Right, okay.
Yes, yes. Just don't downplay it. I'm not taking all these punches and dark stone at me for it not to be a big deal. It's a big deal.
It is.
Absolutely. Matter of fact, while I'm thinking about what's a big, let's just give a round of applause. Applause to the bike release again, the bike. You just made me think of something. I'm just gonna think of something just coming to my mind. We have bikes in the trail. I knew we did that a few months back in twenty twenty-three, but she just provoked me. Everything we do is, there's gonna be a party. Wait a minute, you got me started. There's gonna be a party on the Courtesy Parkway Bridge. By the, when we get that bridge, there's gonna be a big party on that bridge when we finally have cars driving from flat shows to dog, I digress. Yeah, everything's a big deal in a positive way.
With the Courtesy Parkway.
We have the whole county on Courtesy Parkway. And finally off of one thirty-eight in that congested nightmare and engineer nightmare.
Three years in the making, at least.
Absolutely.
Next item please.
I don't know, I kinda like the sensational Costly Mill. That's kinda catchy, you know?
Sensational.
Yeah, that was a good one. You might wanna trademark that. All right, item one-ten is a requisition through the Stormwater Management Department for Pro Shot. This is to upgrade corrugated and rehabilitate metal pipe. It's an additional one million one hundred twenty-six thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents for a new purchase order total of three million three hundred twenty-seven thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-six cents.
Director Simpkins, that in itself is a big deal. We talk about infrastructure improvements and upgrades. The forty years of neglect for our stormwater management in Rockdale County, that's a lot of money we're investing to make sure that we get beyond the situation that we're in. Anything you'd like to share on that? I know that you are working around the clock with your team in terms of stormwater management in Rockdale County.
Yes sir, Mr. Chairman, and happy New Year to you. Yes, we are working around the clock. Your phone rings around the clock and as a result, mine rings around the clock also. So it's a wonderful thing.
We're rocking around the clock.
Rocking and rolling. But yeah, this money once again goes towards our Shotcrete contract. One thing I say about this process, and I've had the chance to kind of educate citizens on this throughout the course of the year, is that we're able to rehabilitate pipes with minimal disruption to, to local traffic and, and the area. As a result, you know, back in the day, we would typically just dig up pipes which you end up having to close a road for an extended period of time. Using this, this process, we're able to go in, Shotcrete, rehabilitate pipes with minimal disruption to traffic. And I think that's always a big thing when you have multiple areas with schools and heavy traffic to where you wanna minimize road closures as much as possible. And this, this contract allows us to get a lot of work done, but, but at the same time minimize impact to the traveling public. So we're, we're, we're rocking and rolling. We're running through projects. And just real quickly, like just to give you an example of some of the projects we have on deck. Ebenezer and Stanton Road, which was quoted at sixty-eight thousand dollars for using this process. If we had to go in and close that road, disrupt utilities, we would be looking at well over two hundred thousand dollars. So this is a substantial, using this process, this is just one example. This is a substantial savings to the taxpayers. You know, they wonder where their stormwater money is going. And we are trying to get the most, biggest bang for our buck with these funds. So just one example.
We appreciate that leadership and appreciate you sharing that tidbit. That's important to the taxpayers. When we make those front-end investments so that we can be proactive on the front end, we don't have to become reactive on the back end. Whenever you're reactive, it's gonna always, almost always cost you more money. So certainly do appreciate that loving leadership. Thank you so much. All right, next item please.
Item one-eleven is an expenditure request for a clean drain plumbing through the General Services Department. This is an emergency sewage drain repair at the courthouse. The amount is twenty-two thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars.
So I, I, I will call Director Hammer up on this one. I want you to just explain to us, this is an emergency sewage drain repair at the courthouse. Tell us about what made it an emergency.
Good evening Chairman, Commissioners. We've had difficulties with some of the infrastructure in our aging facilities over the years. And in this case, the sewer pipe that we had replaced the inside a few years ago is an old cast iron pipe. And cast iron, when it rusts, it rusts from the inside, not from the outside. So all the draining ends up causing the rust to accumulate and make the pipe smaller and smaller and smaller over time. So we replaced the inside section all the way down into the slab a couple of years ago. And the current emergency that happened was the pipe on the outside as it left the building and went under the parking lot over near the Sally Port, essentially failed. And it collapsed, it clogged. We went to fish out, we went to jet it out and discovered that it was just simply crumbled and, and collapsed. So the sewer line had completely failed from the building to the manhole.
Old.
Old, yes sir. So we had the plumbing company come out there. They replaced the, the cast iron and ran it from, with new PVC from that section all the way to the manhole so it'll work again.
How long would you think, I know between yourself and Director Peak and Director Simpkins, y'all should know, but how long ago since folks stopped using cast iron pipes?
I, I can't.
Just give me, just throw out a number. Geez, you know.
It's been the last ten years.
Ten years? But no, 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 no. Cast iron, when, when, they started, cast iron's been out of the industry for a while, hasn't it?
I would say at least.
In some instances.
Okay, educators, come on around Director, educators.
Yes Chairman, and, well I guess a good evening now. Good evening Commissioners and Chairman. Yeah, of course, with cast iron pipe, in some instances, we kind of still use cast iron pipe. But we'll say just a little over twenty years, you try to stop using cast iron pipe and now you try to use PVC plastic pipe.
And I think the problem using it is based on what the director was saying about the deterioration of the pipe. It decays from the inside out.
Absolutely. Absolutely. It closes up the. Absolutely, it closes up the pipe where you can't get any flow through the pipe.
Okay, okay, I can, I can understand that. And with it being under the Sally Port over there, that creates an even more of a problem. Well, this is the kind of education we need to make sure we're getting when we're hearing about our utilities. Even our citizens who are contributing to these taxpaying dollars, upgrades, improvements to our infrastructure, people need to know. People need to understand. The average person, they don't know, I'm not a plumber. I didn't know, but thank you. Let's give both of them a round of applause. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Item 112 is a list of requests for surplus of equipment for the Planning and Development Department, Transportation Department, Water Resources Department, the Finance Department, and the Office of the Clerk of Courts.
All right.
Item 113 is rezoning case 2023-01 in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 0 Southeast Salem Road from SRC NC Salem Road Corridor Neighborhood Commercial District to SRC MXD Salem Road Corridor Mixed Use Development District to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday. Item 114 is rezoning case 2023-10 in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 1680, 1700, 1720, Walker Road Southwest from AR Agricultural Residential to CRS Collaborative Residential Subdivision to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday. Item 115 is future land use map amendment case 2024-01 in ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County, Georgia's comprehensive plan as amended for property located at 2463 and 2453 Northwest Lake Rockaway from the medium density residential future land use category to the commercial future land use category to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a first reading next Tuesday. Item 116 is rezoning case 2024-04 in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 2463 and 2453 Northwest Lake Rockaway from R1 Single Family Residential to C2 General Commercial to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a first reading next Tuesday. Item 117 is a utility easement agreement for Water Resources Department for the Honey Creek and Scott Creek Pump Station and Forest Main Sanitary Sewer Easements for 1245 Norton Road Northeast. Item 118 is a volunteer appointment for the Congress Rockdale Library Board of Trustees for Sue Trough. This is for a reappointment. The term is January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2026. This is the recommendation submitted by the Civic League. Item 119 is a resolution authorizing approval of alcoholic beverage license. Those licenses are attached to the resolution. Item 2024-120 is Rockdale County Policy for Aircraft Drone Policy 2024-2-18.
And this policy applies to county properties, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, just want to make sure that we clarify that. We're talking about county owned and maintained properties. Absolutely. Well, Commissioners, there you have it, the agenda review. Let's see here.
So we are down to public comment, and we did have one that was submitted. Did anyone else have a card? Okay, I'll go ahead and read them. Thanks. I'll go ahead and read the disclaimer while she's bringing that up. And if there's anyone else.
Okay.
As a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments relative to any issues that are currently going through the public hearing process, matters that are in active litigation, political campaigning, or partisan politics will not be heard in this meeting. Speakers are to address the chairman, not each other or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers and or members of the audience shall be permitted.
Thank you so much, Mr. Al Surphus. Come on up, Mr. Surphus. We certainly appreciate you being out and being patient with us tonight during the meeting.
First of all, I thank you for letting me have three minutes in there. Yeah, you have, you have me on watch? Okay. My name is Al Surphus, and I'm a member of Rockdale County. And I don't know how many people sitting in this room are members in Rockdale County all your life. I don't see too many. I know there is one sitting right back here. It's a big difference to be in Rockdale County permanently than just moving into Rockdale County. Things happen a little bit different. I'd like to thank you that you reconsidered turning down this building that we're sitting in now. It was brought back over a hundred years ago. My wife's family, great grandfathers, started this church with this, with a team of mules driving from here to Atlanta and back to get supplies to county. It means a lot to older people, things being torn down, destroyed. We, as a lot of people I've been talking to in my age, have a hard time with this. When history's stored down, our younger generation has a hard time to see where we actually came from and how we became Rockdale County itself. Very important, Rockdale County is a great county in the state of Georgia. As a teacher of fifty years in this county, which is a long time, most of you people probably were in my classrooms just once upon a time. Fifty years is a long time to educate kids. I was head football coach, taught math all my life. I've taken kids to this county, into this courtroom, to this particular area to show them how this county and how this town was actually built and why it was built. It was a very important outlet from Atlanta. You start tearing down buildings as of this particular building, Pine Street, which has just been torn down and replaced, the old gymnasium from the high school that used to be up there. All those things, you bring your kids down and you say, this is where this county was. This is how it started. This is where it all came down, the blood, sweat, and tears that people have put in to make this county. I think the thing, and you're probably going to tear it down, is the jail. I hope not, as that's a very established thing in the area. I believe it's on the on the archivist building by memorite. If you have a lot of money to spend with, and I notice you do, I'm an old math teacher, I probably estimated right now that's about $3 billion right off the top, right there, if I added up in my head correctly, pretty, pretty close to that area. Okay, if you have enough money to put down, I got a few things you can have to put your money on besides tearing down this beautiful building. As you know, there's many houses being built in this county. I look all over the place, there's houses upon houses upon houses. You talk about infrastructure. I'm going to talk about one other thing, and it's beside.
Don't worry about it, I'm going to give you a little grace.
Good, thank you so much.
You represent the history and the heritage of this community, so I'm going to hear the rest of what you have.
I appreciate that, sir. Thank you very much. There's a lot of houses being built in this county. If you want to spend some good money, and I know this is probably not the area to get it to. If there is a hundred houses here being built, which you all know there's more than that, and fifty of those houses just have one kid, just one, one lousy kid, fifty children, you're thinking about minimum of two classrooms. You're talking about two teachers. That's just for fifty. Just think about what we're doing to our kids. You are bringing people into the county that we've got to educate through money. I don't know where you're going to get that, where you put your money to. I saw a whole bunch of it. I saw nothing in education. Maybe this is the wrong facility to talk about that. But to me, it's very, very important. I've seen that my grandchildren and my great grandchildren that I'm bringing in here in this county have to be educated and might cost money. And let me tell you, fifty children and only a hundred, a hundred houses, you need to really think about it, what's really happening. You want to talk about planning for the future, as you said, sir, to look ahead. Those type of things you need to look ahead on. I've been educated all my life. Education has been in the back run because they, people, what they do, they make laws, but don't see the future. The future in this county, Rockdale County, it needs more schools, more teachers, more janitors, more all the things that can make facilities in this county better. So I beg you, pleading with you, not to tear down facilities like this, which are very important for our educational system. And I thank you for giving me an extended period of time and thank you all for hearing my out.
Mr. Surphus, thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens in Rockdale County. Thank you for your time, talent in the industry of educating our children to academic excellence. We heard you very loud and clear tonight. I appreciate you and your lovely wife being patient throughout our meeting this evening and hearing an opportunity to come forward and share with us. I do want to let you know that we do embrace preserving the heritage and the history of our community in Rockdale County as we make plans to prepare to move forward. Thank you so much. Yes, sir. Have a good evening. Need more people like Mr. Surphus dedicated to education and the progression of our community. Absolutely. Thank you for your time. All right, Commissioners, it's now time for a board comment. We'll get Chief Mack in time, go out and put a stick in the air. So it's on you, Commissioner Washington.
Well, as the chairman has said, this is the first time we've had the opportunity to say Happy New Year to you, so Happy New Year, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
We're glad that you're back and it seemed like you're ready to roll. So we're going, we got a lot, we got a lot to do this year.
And I just, let me bring a point of clarity real quick. I've been rocking and rolling all along because, as you know, my cell phone don't stop. And as I was on special assignment, I heard from several folks, and let me just go and throw this in, executive record, really, it's good to be missed.
Yes.
And I heard that you had some folks checking and checking twice and looking around corners and through the hedges, trying to figure out where.
Figure out where, absolutely.
But I'm back and I was, I was working while I was working.
Yeah.
Commissioner Washington, it's your time.
First, one of the things that State Representative Doreen Carter and I did together was a Women's Heart Initiative at Piedmont Hospital. We did that on February 2nd. As you all know, or many people know, that Doreen had a heart attack several years ago. And since then, heart, being heart conscious has been one of her chief initiatives. So Georgia Piedmont actually was one of our premier sponsors, and they had a, one of their cardiologists come and talk to a full house of, it was, there was not a seat left in the place, of women to become educated about heart disease and and things relating to heart health. The, and I remiss that I did not write her name down, but the cardiologist that spoke to us has women's heart screenings. They, it's a, they do a complete health history, a physical exam, the arterial brachial, brachial index, an EKG labs, and a heart health report. It is $99. It is not covered by insurance. But we had a lady that went and took the screening. She said everything was right. Like she said, everything, she had to come, she has to now go and modify her entire life because everything came up positive for her needing to change it. Her, she was not heart healthy, and that's just one person. I'm scared to take it, but I'm going to. But anyway, the number that you can call to take this heart screening is 404-605-2800. That's 404-605-2800. Another thing that came out of this, Dr. Toni Alvarado was our keynote speaker, and she did a great job of making sure that we understood that it's okay to take good care of yourself. You need to embrace self-care, self-love. And one of the things that started from that is that the women from the National Council of Negro Women, they've started a Heart Healthy Walk every Friday at eight o'clock in the morning at Wheeler Park. And so that is just something that was started from this Heart Healthy Initiative, eight o'clock in the morning, Wheeler Park, I guess, I don't know, I haven't made it yet. I plan on making it this Friday. But it's just a good thing to start for our heart initiative. The, my trustee Andre has just sent me the doctor's name, which is Dronell Linton, Dr. Dronell Linton. And so I'm encouraging everybody to go get the screening for $99. I don't think we can afford not to get it at this point. That's the number one thing. My second thing today was NACO. We just came back from the National Association of County Officials. And I think this is my eighth one, and I think that every year they get better. The information is better, and it might be because I'm more acclimated and I'm more involved and I know what's going on and I participate more. But this was an amazing convention. We also, of course, got to hear the president, which was great. But we also, you know, do, there's a day set aside where you can go and talk to your representatives. And we went and we had a one-on-one with John Ossoff and his, his chief of staff as well as our new congressman, David Scott. So I was really, really pleased with that. We also had a meeting with the Economic Development Administration because we are trying to get the money for the EV initiative fully funded, and they have been a great help on that. So I would like to thank staff because they put everything together, Andre, Jennifer, and Patty Daly in DC. And it was just a really, really good event. For right now, that's all I have until Dr. Williams reminds me of something.
All right, Dr. Williams.
I have several things, but let me talk about NACO first, since you ended on that. I think what really impressed me this year was two things. There was a huge emphasis on housing.
Yes.
And the desperate need for housing across the country, all different kinds of housing, different price levels, and even at the top level, there's a need for that housing, too. So there was, that was really interesting to me. I did have a chance at the Tuesday morning, whatever they called it, federal expo, where representatives from a number of federal agencies were there. And I had a fairly extensive conversation with a person from HUD, the Housing Urban and Urban Development Department. And that was interesting to talk to her about getting affordable housing, getting transitional housing, how to work all of that in to what we're doing as we plan our community growth, basically. So I do have information from that. The other thing that really struck me is, at least the different workshops that I was in and even some of the main speakers, was mental health wove itself through everything, everything. Housing, when they were talking about housing, when they were talking about roads, when they, you know, just infrastructure, mental health just was a part of everything, which I thought was the, the first time I have heard it be an all-inclusive kind of conversation. I have always thought it was inclusive and permeates every piece of our society and every piece of our community. But I think this was the first time that I felt like national leaders were saying the same thing I've been thinking for quite a long time. So that's something to, you know, we need to continue with our stepping up, with the things that we're doing to assist those that are in our accountability courts. And look at what else, what, what more can we be doing to assist the, the citizens in our county? The latest thing I just read said 50% of youth in this study. The latest thing I just read said 50% of youth in this study talked about having some kind of anxiety or depression compared to like 15 years ago, when it was like 20%? It's just really, you know, exponentially gotten a bigger issue. Director Simkins, I wanted to say thank you. I had a conversation with a friend of mine who said, I just love Terrence Simkins. He came to my house, he helped me out. She paid $25,000 herself to get a retention bond, but the county did something, and I haven't had a chance to talk with you about it. But she was, she just had all kinds of wonderful things to say about you, which, and I haven't seen her, this friend, in several months, I mean, a long, longer than that probably. And that was one of the first things she said. So, thank you. Talking about heart health, the one thing I wanted to add to that is that heart disease is the number one cause of death for women. And, you know, for so long, we thought it was a men's issue, and now we know that it's a women's issue also. That's one of the things Representative Carter tries to do, is say, hey, it happened to me, it can happen to you. And so keep up with your health. So I jotted that phone number down for that heart screening. I think that's, you know, sounds like something to, to look into. The last thing I had was, February is, besides Heart Health Month, is also Black History Month. And as I was thinking about it today, I thought, I think the thing I really want to share is how much I appreciate the black culture and the music and the, the churches and how much that has impacted my life. Couple of different stories about that. When I grew up in California, there was one black student in my high school, and he was a foreign exchange student from Africa. So I had no exposure to black culture at all. I had a lot of exposure to Hispanic culture, and I loved that culture, too, because that's what I was surrounded with. So when I moved to the South, I really didn't know what this was all about. And I have to tell you how impactful it is for me and how much I appreciate the people that I work with, the, the opportunities I've had, the exposure I've had to a culture that I didn't grow up with, or, or really, I didn't know anything about it growing up. So, secondly, I was in Publix today, and there was a black woman in there with headphones on, singing as loud as she could some praise songs and dancing as she was shopping.
She was at a church.
She was at, it was at, she was at the church. And I thought, you know, probably to thought that lady was nuts if I didn't know about black culture and be familiar with the music and the, and like I said, the religion, the church experience. I just smiled the whole time I was shopping, because I knew where she was. You know, you could tell where she was. And Commissioner Washington, you know, I watch Wheel of Fortune every day. Comes on at seven o'clock.
Except for tonight.
Well, I'll watch it when I get home. But the, one of the ladies last night talked about how she was a member of the best sorority. And, and she did, she did that on Wheel of Fortune last night. And again, that's one of those little things that I would have known nothing about had I not had this.
Had you not known, Commissioner Washington.
Well, and, and I know a number of people who belong to that sorority, too, but, so my thought tonight is how much cultures impact our lives for the good, and how the differences that we have are to be celebrated. They're, they're not to be, you know, you, you look for the commonalities, but you appreciate the differences. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Washington. Any additional thoughts?
I'm gonna, next week, I'm gonna have two Black History facts prepared, because I forgot all about Black History this month.
Hmm.
I know.
That's all I'm gonna say. And, and the most used word of my grandmother, hmm. That's Black History right there. But let me, let me, as we wrap up, let me, I want to say, I do want to acknowledge a few things that have taken place over time. Just this past weekend, at the Fox Theatre downtown Atlanta, our very own Rockdale resident led by, under the leadership of Dr. Dukey, she had the annual Royal Arts Gala that took place down at the Fox Theatre, which is a display of arts, culture, and entertainment, particularly in the African-American and minority communities all across the United States, which includes Atlanta, Georgia. That was a great event, and several Rockdale residents. And I gotta give a big, 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 big shout out to Rockdale County's very own employee and resident, Mr. Corey Brown, shut down the Fox Theatre with his saxophone. Y'all give Corey Brown a round of applause, absolutely. Yes, indeed. Y'all know Corey is part of Planning and Development, and he works for our, with our Community Improvement Team and does a fantastic job, but he represented us in high fashion. Also, Ms. Rebecca Gibbons. Give Rebecca Gibbons another, a round of applause as well. Absolutely. Rockdale was represented in high fashion at the Fox Theatre. This was a packed auditorium, a packed Egyptian ballroom, and as Chairman of the County, I could not have been more proud to be sitting among so many people across the country, across the state of Georgia, and certainly across this northern region, as many of Rockdale talents were displayed. This event was hosted by a Rockdale resident. Dr. Dukey has been in the arts, culture, and entertainment for over 40 years, coming from New York here to Atlanta and residing now in Rockdale County. It was a grand affair, and we all would have certainly been proud in Rockdale County. You talked about February being the month of love, and we celebrated Valentine's Day, and you talked about heart health, and all of those things are very, very important. It's okay if you didn't think about it, it's all right. I got this over here. It's okay, don't give me them looks. I'm, this is, this is my piece now. So, okay, well, it'll be all right. You'll be ready for next year. It comes, you got, you got a whole year to get ready.
There'll be nine years. Eight years, no Valentine's.
No confessions, please, no confessions, no testimonies, however you want to call it.
We could roll the tape for the past nine years.
Right, every year, same thing. Okay, go ahead.
Moving on from Valentine's Day, February is the month of love, and certainly we should be loving all year long, but it's the month that we celebrate love and the magic of love. I think it was, you talk about Black History, it was black recording artist Frankie Lyman. He says, he asked the question, why do fools fall in love? And well, everybody can answer that on their own, I won't get in that tonight, but the month of February is the month of Black History and love. And we're tracking good timewise, you can get out of here on time tonight, the second part series of an A and E special highlighting the late, great Godfather Soul from Augusta, Georgia, his documentary titled Said Loud, I'm Black and I'm Proud. The second part airs tonight at 8:00 PM on A and E. And when you learn the work of the history and how the Godfather Soul, James Brown, the most sampled artist in American music, is Godfather Soul, James Brown. They talk about how his music impacted politics, education, business, and all, and every music genre there is. So you get a chance to get a piece of that tonight if you turn on to A and E. They're doing the second part, Part Two of that documentary. You know, I'm a huge James Brown fan. I saw, I was glued to the tube last night, Mr. Surfers, and I'm gonna be glued to, as soon as I can get home tonight, I'm gonna get out there and, 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 and watch some more of it. If we can get out of here on time, at least get the tail end of it. Executive Director Holmes. But I think there's a video related to some of what we're talking about in the spirit of Black History, and talk to me, Executive Director Rutherford.
So we have a few videos ready for you.
Oh, okay, all right.
We have, I don't know if we want to start with NACO? We could, we can start with NACO. I think our, the board's already given a pretty good update, so we've got a video on that ready.
And, and right before y'all hit the, the go button for NACO, let me give, thank you, I missed that piece. During the convention in DC for NACO, Commissioners, y'all need to know this, so I reached back to Rockdale to Chief Sanders, and I asked her for the mileage on our veterans' transport vehicle. We have a transport vehicle that gives, provides door-to-door service for the local veterans in Rockdale County. And the leadership of the Veterans Administration was in part of those federal representatives, and they sought me out and said, listen, tell me about this, this vehicle you have. So I got ahold of Public Relations, had Ms. Janetta Owens to very quickly send me the clip. They're showing the clip on Capitol Hill in their Veterans Roundtable, and it's featuring Rockdale County, because we paved the way in terms of taking the, we're not waiting on anybody to take care of our own veterans. There are over 6,500 veterans that don't have transportation to get to their doctor's appointment. From Rockdale to Claremont Road, or Claremont Avenue, or whatever it is there in Decatur, is a good long ways. And what happens, those folks fall through the crack, and then they have so many things that happen, because they're not able to make it to the doctor's appointments. It's a big, it's a big plus for Rockdale County that we have our own vehicle, it's ADA compliance, we can put two wheelchairs in there, and the two people who are employed to drive the vehicle are both veterans. So we've, we've employed veterans to be able to make sure we take care of veterans. I wanted, that's a big deal. I almost forgot about it, Chief Sanders. I reached out to you and Janetta Owens and PR, y'all gave me a quick response, and they're talking about us in DC and showing us as a pilot, an example to other counties. There are 3,069 counties in the United States, S and D.
So my husband is going to be using that service this week for the very first time.
Very good.
I went over a couple weeks ago, got him all registered and, and into the program, and talked to the drivers, and they will pick him up at the house and bring him back. His caregiver can go with him. And, you know, they will wait while he's in his appointment and be taking him back.
I'm glad you pointed out the fact that they will wait. We don't just drop them off and leave them, we stay there with them, we get them back. That's why it's called door-to-door service. In fact, it's part of Senior Services, which is a part of Parks and Recreation. Y'all, let's give Rockdale a round of applause, yes. Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you for provoking my thought, let's watch the NACO video.
Chairman Osmond, Rockdale County, Georgia, with representative here in the nation's capital at the National Association of Counties. Our focus this year is on cybersecurity, economic development, and small business procurement. We want to make sure that from a cybersecurity standpoint, that we are safeguarding all of the technology and the technology infrastructure in Rockdale County. America is built on the backs of small businesses. We want to make sure that local, small businesses in our community, as well as entrepreneurs, have a pathway to progress in Rockdale County. And the last thing, our number one priority is always public safety. One of the hottest topics this year is Next Gen. Make sure the Sheriff's Office, the Fire Department, M.A., 911, and the city private police can all integrate and talk to each other in any event of an incident or major accident in our community. I'm Chairman Osmond, in the nation's capital at NACO Conference.
Well, I'm telling you, you're right, Commissioner Washington, Commissioner Williams, we've been attending this conference, they know who Rockdale is.
Yes, they do.
They know who Rockdale County is. We not only have, you know, the fact that I'm able to sit on the Board of Directors for the National Association of Counties allows us to have, as I've repeated before, a seat at the table and a voice in the room. But they know who our folks are, and our people are so engaged. And then they ask, did you bring a big crowd with you? Because people are impressed to the fact that we invest in our directors and our deputy directors to make sure that they're on the cutting edge of information and technology so we can come back and better serve our own community. So much of, of these conferences, the essence is networking, being able to network and pick up information from various different people who attended. The breakout sessions are phenomenal, but being able to communicate with other folks and pick up what they're doing in other communities is a big deal. Commissioner Washington?
I was just gonna say that we got fantastic feedback from Director Margaret Moore Jackson, presented at the NACO Conference, and as well as Tony Holmes.
Let's give them both a round of applause, absolutely.
And, and the comments on how phenomenal they were, everybody was saying that we were well represented, and they were very impressed with those two presentations. So thank you all.
Yeah, so to the point, we had to keep an eye on Tony Holmes. I had somebody ask me, somebody trying to hire her and take her, take her away from Rockdale County, and I just gave them that look. You, you know that look, Hunter, you know that look.
Your grandma's look.
Yeah. Eighty percent of all communication is non-verbal, so I just framed, I just looked at them, they knew exactly. You remember that schoolteacher look, Mr. Surfers? I gave them that look, and I'm like, don't even try, not today. We have another video.
So before we move on to the next video, we just wanted to take a minute, talking about appointments and acknowledge some of the things the three of you have going on. I mean, I know that you sit on the NACO Board, but also on the Transportation Air Quality Committee from the ARC, as well as Commissioner Washington with the Local Leadership Housing Action Committee through the ARC. So congratulations to the two of you for the recent appointments.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I mean, it, it, I can't leave it just right there. All three of you sit on so many local, state, and federal boards. I mean, you give kudos to the staff that, you know, we're well-known, but everybody knows the three of you, and we're grateful for that, so thank you.
Well, we're only as good as the staff that serves us, and you all make us look good by providing us with the information so that we can go forth and do what we need to do. For Rockdale to be the second smallest county in the state of Georgia, we are well-represented, and we have a seat at, some larger counties and communities don't have this level of representation that we have in Rockdale County, so it's not to be taken lightly at all, absolutely. Thank you so much. Next item.
Okay, now we can go on to the next item. Okay, I had to get that out. So we do have another video for the promo for the Black History. Are we ready to play that one, too?
All right.
Rockdale County. It elected its inaugural African-American officials in county offices, a momentous occasion that paved the way for the emergence of the Slate of Eight. Here are the stories about a group of individuals that changed the history of representation in Rockdale County forever.
It's a good idea if you want your own Slate of Eight.
Welcome to the Historic Slate of Eight.
All right, so that's airing right now throughout the whole month of February, Black History Month, the Slate of Eight. You can catch it on Channel 23, or you can go and pick it up on Vimeo as well. So let's give the members of the Slate of, the original Slate of Eight, a round of applause. All right, you have another video, is that, take care of it?
Do you have more? Okay, I think that's it.
One more? Oh, that's it? Okay, all right, all right. Well, listen, I, I want to say it's certainly good to be back, and all of the progress that we're making, all around. to be back and, and all of the progress that we're making, uh, all around the county. I will, uh, share the last piece of information, Commissioners. Uh, I don't know the last time you all, again, have driven down, uh, Sigma Road.
Oh, just the other day. It's fabulous.
Yes.
Yes.
The improvement on Sigma Road is getting a lot of feedback from, uh, folks. Also want to talk about the proactive measures we're making in Parks and Recreation, uh, with our AED machines, thanks to EMAs and Parks and Rec and General Services. Uh, I've also had a conversation with Director Redmond and Director Hammer about being proactive in Rockdale County in terms of, of cameras and surveillance throughout all of our parkways. We're looking into that. We're researching the most efficient and effective way to do that. We don't want to be reactive. We want to be proactive. You're seeing so many, uh, stories all across the metro about things that are happening to people. In Rockdale County, we want to be ahead of the curve. They've made some major improvements in terms of lightning, lightning, uh, making sure that we have the lighting around, uh, particularly over at Wheeler Park and some of the dark areas, but to make sure that we have surveillance. We can't put a, a camera in, on the whole entire trail, but different pockets of the trail to make sure that we can do some surveillance and protect our citizens. People ought to be able to walk in peace without having to have a problem. But when incidents do happen, we want to be able to provide to the police department and the sheriff's office tools and resources that can help them track down those negative, uh, bad actors and perpetrators that are lurking. Uh, Rockdale County, I gotta say it, I'm gonna say it, is the safest county in the metropolitan Atlanta region. We are part of the Atlanta Regional Commission. We are part of the metro, uh, area for, for, for City of Atlanta or for the Atlanta metropolitan area. We are the safest county. Every now and then, something does happen. We have people that live here, but we're not that county that you hear night after night after night after night. So that's a big plus for the citizens of Rockdale County. Thanks to Sheriff Levitt, thanks to, thanks to, uh, Chief Scott Freeman over at the City Police Department. They do a great job with keeping, uh, safe in Rockdale County. Uh, listen, Executive Director, uh, Relich, is there any need for, uh, executive session tonight or, uh, is there any need?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, okay. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time and your patience tonight. This meeting is adjourned.